I'm admitting everyone and I'll let you know when they're in the room. You should be good to begin, Madam President.
Okay, so, good eve- evening of everyone. It's the reg- regular board me- meeting of the Beata Lon Lonto Elementary School Dist- District. It's Tues- Tuesday, Feb- February 8, 2022. Okay, so, let's please have a call to ord- order 1.03 roll- roll call and quorum establishment. Trustee Akas?
Present.
Trustee La French?
La French, present.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, present.
Trustee Webster?
Trustee Webster, present.
Trustee Benz? Trustee Benz, pre- present. The time is now 5:31 and we have a quorum. Okay, 1.004 pledge of allegiance. Can you pla- please stand and place your right- right hand o- over your heart? Okay, and red- ready be begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Okay, adop- adoption of the- the agen- agenda 2.001 per proposed additions, deletions, and adjustments in the order of biz- business.
Madam President, we do not have any tonight.
Okay, than- thank you. 2.002 adop- adoption of the agen- agenda. I- I may need a mo- motion to approve.
Trustee Turner.
Okay, I'll give the motion to Turner and the se- second to Ek- Ekis?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And can- can I have- have a vote, vote please?
Trustee Akas?
I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee Webster?
Trustee Webster, I.
Trustee Benz?
And Benz, I. Mo- mo- motion passes 5:00. Okay, um, three close ses- session de- declarations. We will be ta- taking i- items 3.02 and 3.003 in- into closed sess- session. Okay, uh, for pub- public test- testimony, be- be for closed set- session.
Madam President, there are no closed session comments for tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you, so, um, none from A- ADTA or CSEA?
No, no, no comments for closed session tonight, madam.
Okay, okay then, so then we will re- recess to closed sess- session. Can- can I get- get a- a mo- motion?
I'm sorry, motion.
La French.
Okay, I love all the participat- patient now. Okay, here we go, so I'll give it, I'll give the- the mo- motion to Ek- Ekis and La- La French the sec- second, okay?
Good.
Okay, and can I get a vote, please?
Trustee Akas?
I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee Webster?
Trustee Webster, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I, okay, mo- mo- motion pa- passes 5:00. And the time is now 5:30. And I will see you in closed sess- session. She joined the closed session, she's coming back in. Oh, okay. And we'll just give her a men- minute so she can join us and then we'll start. Bless you.
Thank you.
Michael, do you see her there? I've not seen anyone joining yet.
Still don't see trust- trusty Ekis nor her phone number.
Okay, um, should I just start or shall we give her another men- minute?
She just joined.
Okay. Okay, is she in? All right, yeah, we- we hear he- hear you, okay, now we- we can- can start.
Thank you.
Okay, are we good, Mike, Mi- Michael?
Yes, Madam President.
Okay, welcome back. Uh, let me go 6.00001 call to or order 6.02 roll- roll call and quorum establishment.
Trustee Akas?
I, or present.
Trustee La French?
La French, present.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, present.
Trustee Webster?
Trustee Webster, present.
Trustee Benz?
And Benz, pre- present. The time is now 7:40. Okay, there was no- nothing to re- report out, so we'll go- go on to 8 pub- public test- testimony, 8.001 pub- public com- comment period.
I'm gonna have to read that.
Thank- thank you.
No worries. The public comment period is administered by state law and is appointed a meeting and set aside for members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Open meeting laws do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. The health, well-being, and public safety of community members, public officials, and employees.
Uh-oh, he froze.
I think we lost Dr. Mitchell.
Okay, does somebody want to take over? I- I read, but we'd be here all night.
I can take over, President Benz.
Okay, than- thank you.
Oh, he's back, there he is. You froze, Dr. Mitchell.
Oh, did I freeze? I'm sorry, guys, um, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. This meeting is in compliance with the Governor's Executive Order AB 361, uh, which will provide local legislative bodies with the continued flexibility to meet remotely without adhering to the Brown Act's teleconferencing rules during a proclaimed state of emergency, but with the following key dictations. Number one, public comment must be allowed in real time. Number two, there are, if there are technical issues, the meeting must be stopped and no vote or- or other official actually can be taken into the public and once again participate in the proceedings. Uh, protocols for speakers. Any- any person who wishes to address the governing board on closed session agenda items or open must only complete a- submit an AESD speaker request form five minutes before the meeting is called to order. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agenda item period. Once a part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Additionally, a public speaker can be cut off for exceeding the allotted time or for willfully causing an actual disruption to the meeting. Before cutting a person off or removing someone from the board, the board will give at least one clear warning. If we are cut off or worn last time, please consider that your warning. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board for each closed session or- or opposition agenda items. The board limits the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to- to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional person speak only if they have something new to add. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, than- than- thank you. Okay, do- do we have 8- 8.002? Do we have a speak- speaker from A- ADTA?
Yes, the board welcomes Nanette Cadilly, President of ADTA.
Okay.
Nanette, are you on?
I'm on. I think my video isn't on yet. Hi, good evening Cabinet, Dr. Mitchell, President Benz, trustees, CSEA, ADTA, and parents. I'd like to congratulate our new trustee, Stephanie Webster. Welcome to our district. I want to start off by thanking our trustees for attending the CTA school board luncheon. It was so good to see you and for the second year in a row, we have the most trustees attend, so thank you, thank you for that. You all posed very good questions and I hope that the responses were helpful. As we head into our fifth negotiations meeting, I just want to point out that I have heard Dr. Mitchell say during our 50 days that he wanted our employees to have fully paid medical. I have also heard this board indicate the same. The only way to do that is to change the language to fully paid medical, not just raise the cap. We have all heard you and we appreciate that this is as important to you as it is to us. Retaining teachers and staff should be the focus of this district. What is best for our students is to preserve our public education. Let's settle this contract fairly, thank you.
And, thank you.
Thank you. The- the board welcomes Diane Lynn, President of CSEA. Diane?
Hello, good evening, President Benz, trustees, Dr. Mitchell, Cabinet, ADTA members, CSEA members, and all others attending this me- meeting. Um, first of all, I would like to congratulate our new trustee, Ms. Webster. Welcome to ASD and again, congratulations. Um, second of all, I would like to say I've been on several new hire orientations for our many vacancies. I've seen new bus drivers, parrots, proctors, and sub- clerical personnel. Thank you to our overworked human relations department. Do you have any other issues that we need to... That needs to be addressed? Um, here's a very word on negotiations. We have agreed on our reclassification MOU. Hopefully, we can get it six-ten and we can vote on it. We also have an MOU regarding additional hours for our librarians. These positions were eight hours per day until 2009 when their work hours were cut to six hours a day due to a budget crunch. The hours at the time were for librarian duties only. Then, as we all know, here comes COVID. After the distance learning from March through 2019, all classified members through an MOU were allowed to do other job duties out of the classification. The purpose was for the best interest of the district and also to protect our jobs and the possibility of layoffs for all classified categories. We had bus drivers working for our IT department and also at different school sites. Security were working in the offices. CNS were outside issuing lunches and food to our Adelanto families and et cetera. All of our classified employees were doing different duties at that time. Um, this a year, um, V CSEA created an MOU asking for our librarians to be brought back up to eight hours a day to provide hours for students and the fact that they have been given an extra task dealing with Chromebooks for each student at their school sites. With only six hours a day, this new tax takes away much needed time that is needed for our students for reading, checking out books, basically the need for a true librarian. After all, we are in the market of educating students. After taking a poll today from our librarians, some admin at the sites are allowing their librarians a few hours a week to handle the additional workload. However, we have many who aren't allowed to have any extra hours. The MOU has been set aside for next year based on the assumption that they are all working extra hours. My opinion on this matter is our librarians need these hours, 40 hours a week, to accomplish not only the librarian job duties, but also, let me flip this page, but also the additional hours needed to continue the extra tasks of the Chromebooks, which is a humongous task. Um, with the Chromebooks, they have to issue them to every single student. Um, they're constantly coming back because of the demographics of our community. A lot of our students can't even take care of their own possessions, let alone possessions of the school district. So, our- our librarians are having to take them in, check them out, find out what's wrong with them. If we issue them, there's a lot of paperwork involved with them sending it back to IT. It seems that many of our classified staff in every single category are overworked, stressed out, and do not feel valued as a district employee. We classified staff keep doing and doing, are always on the back burner. Our librarians are only one department of our members. We already have one secret- secretary out of stress. We have Paris teaching a class without a teacher. We have members who are ready and willing to talk, take on a second part-time job, but we're told we already have too many applications on file. Your essential workers are frustrated and I really would not like to see our members leaving AESD due to frustration and being overlooked. We would like to see our members happy and proud to serve AESD. We are essential workers and are here for the students, parents, and the community. Your essential workers have stepped up to the plate and are handling the huge task of COVID tracing and doing the jobs that AMLCC were doing. We have already, um, proven we are here for our district. It would be awesome if it was reciprocated from Cabinet and all of our admin personnel. Thank you so much for listening.
Okay, thank- thank you.
Thank you, and our last speaker tonight, President Benz, is, uh, the board welcomes Jennifer Rader. Ms. Rader, mute yourself, thank you.
You're on mute, Ms. Ms. Rade- Rader.
I see that, thank you, I see that now. I'm on my phone, which I'm not usually, so, thank you for your patience, I appreciate that. Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Mitchell, trustees, and cabinet. Our state is deep in the COVID hole, but rather than admitting they messed up, they are deciding to layer on more restrictions. At what point do we put our foot down and say enough is enough? How many more masks, tests, vaccines, and quarantines can we layer on to our staff and children? While Inglewood in Los Angeles County prepares to host the Super Bowl, how many restrictions before you realize we have to learn to live with this virus and let kids be kids? The recent guidance states that cloth masks are no longer recommended. The CDC has said they are no better than facial decoration, essentially worthless. The vast majority of our staff and students have been wearing these useless cloth masks and some still are since we returned to school in August 2021. If we've gone this long without a major issue or outbreak in masks that are now deemed worthless, doesn't it prove that we never needed masks in the first place? Israel has lifted the mask mandate in schools and kids erupted with shouts of joy. Thirty-four states have ended the mask mandate or never had one in effect in the first place, all without incidents. Uh, our huge absentee rate is crippling our classes. All the students absent are not sick. The majority of them are staying home for a quarantine due to sitting next to or across from a child who is homesick, who is homesick. This is unnecessary and patently ridiculous. All our students move throughout the classroom and just like the flu, some of them will be infected. There's no way to predict who, but two or more students are arbitrarily chosen to stay home. Perfectly healthy kids are being told to stay home for two weeks or until a negative test comes back. That's at least two kids leaving school for no reason. Our district has spent and is spending millions of dollars in contact tracing that is no longer necessary. As more and more staff members and students recover from COVID and now have natural immunity, something that the CDC finally came out saying as is be- that is better than a vaccine, we are achieving that herd immunity. I know COVID can be still be serious, I had a friend die just after Christmas, but the health conditions of the youth don't mention that those youths have been regular vapors where the lungs are compromised, coated with the oil inhaled permanently, nor are the comorbidities of older individuals involving lifestyle, obesity, diabetes, cancers, and heart problems. Are they ever mentioned? You've said your hands are tied, that is not true. Other districts are urging teachers to test regularly without making it mandatory. Other school districts are even removing the mask mandate for students and staff. Now is our chance to change our course of action and start putting our children first. Change starts with you. You have the power to write a letter to the state, pass a resolution, take a stand, boldly state we will no longer live in fear, and we will start doing what's best for our students. You do have the power and change starts with you, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, that concludes our public speakers, thank you.
Okay, all right, than- thank you. Okay, so we will go on to 9.01, Gov- Governing Board Mem- Members Reports and Announcements. Um, uh, Trustee La French, would- would you like to start?
I'm here, I'm here, I'm here.
Okay.
I had said no at first, but I was.
Oh, I'm sorry, I- I didn't hear- hear you, so I could- couldn't go, go on and say, okay, I'll just pick some- someone else. See what hap- happens when- when you're- you're muted, muted? No. Well, than- thank you for being the first.
Thank you. I want to say good evening to everyone and I want to say that, um, over the last week, yes, I did enjoy going to the CTA, uh, school board, um, lunching. It was very enlightening. Um, I enjoyed speaking with the other people, asking my questions. Um, it was very nice to be there, I really enjoyed, um, talking. I saw my soapbox for a little bit, but they allowed me, so I- I had a really nice time there, I really did, really, um, nice people. Um, also, um, I had the opportunity last week to go out and to visit Melva Davis and Gus Franklin along with George and, um, West Creek. I want to say that I had so much fun going out to visit and talking to the principals and talking to the children. They were so kind to me, the children are so sweet, the schools were very clean and everybody was happy and I got to see like, um, I think it was at one of the schools, they had like these really big tiers where, you know, you could see through, but you know, everyone had their social distancing, they had a mask on. Um, it was great to be out and to talk to people and to, um, I may have given a hug or two, I did, I am a hugger, but I had a nice time seeing the kids and, um, seeing all the wonderful things that were doing. The classrooms are really beautiful, the, um, the tables they have that are like triangles that go into a circle and, you know, the smart TVs. I was so proud of the schools and, um, the teachers and just talking to people. That's all I have to say. Keep up the good work, I enjoyed, can't wait to see you guys next week and I had a really great time, thank you.
I think, thank you. Uh, trustee Ek- Ekis?
Yeah, just- just real quick, again, I apologize for being on my phone tonight. Um, I'm having difficulties. Um, I- I've been in the morn- this morning, I was at the ur- urgent care at Kaiser with, uh, extreme vertigo. Um, it just came on all of a sudden in the middle of the night and, um, it was really bad, really bad. And I'm just kind of taking my little dizzy pills and- and hoping it'll go away. So, um, so far, you know, I'm- I'm able to at least sit up and (laugh) and not fall over. But, um, anyway, I would welcome any prayers and, um, any- any, uh, kind thoughts on me getting better. Um, so again, I do apologize for being on my phone and- and just thank you for being patient with me tonight, thank you.
All right, than- thank you, trustee Ek- Ekis. Uh, trustee Turner?
Okay, thank you. Um, trustee Akas, I know what vertigo is like, I suffered with that a couple years ago. Um, you know, I had all intentions of going to CTA this Saturday, then I had an emergency in my house and I realized that I missed it at four o'clock and so I apologize for not being there. I know I was there last year and it's very interesting listening to other board members, um, uh, share their concerns, share their experiences, so I missed out and I apologize for that. Um, I really don't have much to say, uh, so I'll just be short. Uh, I know we have quite a few other items on the agenda, so thank you. Oh, and I would like to welcome again trustee Webster to our team and, um, thank you for your questions and, uh, congratulations again, thank you.
Okay, uh, tru- trustee Web- Webster?
Um, okay, I guess I'll just jump right in. I want to say thank you to everybody who's offered their congratulations. Um, I want to extend a special thank you to Dr. Mitchell. Um, and I just kind of wanted to- to say that, yeah, I know that there's a lot of, um, maybe concern going on and I just hope that I can make everybody proud, work with the team to bring some positive to this district. I know that morale might be a little lacking and whatnot, but I have full faith in this team and Ms. Dr. Mitchell to- to really start something great and I just want to say thank you to everybody, including this board, for the opportunity to do so. Um, and then I'm gonna end it there for tonight, but once again, thank you so much.
All right, than- than- thank you and it's my turn, so yes, I do want- want to thank trustee Web- Webster. Um, I, you know, we've, I had a chance to have- have her sit in on the agen- agenda sit, uh, set, so, set study meeting, which gave her a chance to take- take a deep, deep look and see how we do- do things and I just want to well-welcome her, because I know when I first game, I had no idea what I was do- doing and I was like a deer in head- head- headlights and I was trying- trying to play cool so that it did show the fear I had. Um, I did enjoy the lun- luncheon with the seat, CCTA. I do appre- appreciate the- the invita- tation and all of the other board mem- members and the other, you know, um, un- union mem- members and how they all share and how they talk and they allowed me to ask questions and- and I do, uh, appre- appreciate that, so. And, um, I just, I think that's all I have for now, because still, still, holy me, I didn't write right notes, so. I'll end that so that we can move on, okay? So, let's go on to 10, uh, adoption of the min- minutes, uh, 10.001 board mi- min- Ten point zero, zero one, board minutes approve as written. The, the order filed reg- regular board meeting of Jan- January twenty fifth, twenty twenty-two, and the special board meeting of January twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Okay, motioned by Webster. Can I get a second?
Trustee Turner, I second.
Second. Oh, Trustee Webster, it's your first motion. I'm so proud. I'm sorry. I'm just kidding. Okay, back to work. Okay, can I please get a vote?
Trustee Eckus?
No.
Trustee La French?
La French, yes.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Ben?
Ben's eye, mo- motion passes for one. Okay, and move, moving on to the consent agenda. We are taking items eleven point zero two through eleven point two zero. Does any trustee want to pull an item?
Yes, President Ben, I would like to pull eleven ten, acceptance of the twenty twenty-one annual audit.
Okay. That's going to be pulled. Is there anything else? Any other trustee you want to pull? Okay, I would like to pull, and let me make sure I get the right number. Eleven, eleven point one nine, which is the acceptance of classified, no, not that one. I'm sorry, my bad. Is that it? I wish I had a little more detail, but I do want to pull eleven, eleven, four, fourteen. And hold on, I got my copy. I'm sorry, just be a little patient with me here. No, um, no, that's not it. Yes, here it is. Eleven eighteen, eleven, eleven point eighteen, yes. Oh, how weird. It isn't printed on my, my thing.
I noticed it cut off at the bottom, Trustee Ben.
Yes, no, that, that's why I got thrown off. I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. I had to go online and look because I was like, wait a minute. Okay, so I would like to pull eleven, eleven point eighteen and eleven point fourteen. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, sorry about that delay. Okay, so for all of the other items, minus eleven point ten, eleven point fourteen, and eleven point eighteen. Can I please get a motion?
Trustee Turner, I motion to approve the remaining consent agenda.
Okay, and can I get a second?
Trustee La French, I second.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a vote, please?
Trustee Eckus?
Aye.
Trustee La French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Webster?
Trustee Webster, aye.
Trustee Ben?
And Ben's eye, mo- motion passes five zero. Okay, so I need a motion to accept eleven, eleven point ten.
Trustee Turner, I motion that we approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty-one audit, annual audit.
Okay, and can I get a second?
I second, I'm sorry.
Okay. Second, La French. Okay, we are open for discussion.
I pull this item for a presentation, a brief presentation on the audit. This is something that we generally put on new business. But I, it's on consent, and I think that we need to be transparent in this, so.
Dr. Mitchell?
Yes, thank you. I'm gonna ask, Zach Clements, are you on? Mr. So, do you see Zach?
Good evening, everyone.
Hold on a little bit. Zach is our director of fiscal. Kind of frame, just an overview of what the audit is and what, what purpose it serves. And then be able to address any of the board's questions. Do you want to report tonight? Mr. Kraus is out ill tonight and so standing in is Mr. Clemmish.
Good evening, trustees. This is our normal year-end audit that occurs every year with Nigro and Nigro. Overall, this was a great audit. There were no financial penalties or serious findings. Would you like me to go through each finding? Did you have one in particular?
If you could go through the findings, Jack, that would be great. I know it is a great audit, but just clarify the findings over that.
For the first finding, that was for, every year we have to offer Title I funds private schools that are in our area. And this finding specifically was for S R one funds. We missed it for the twenty twenty-one year, but we have made corrections for the future years. For finding two, the auditors audited attendance at some of our sites for kindergarten retention forms, two of the selected ones did not have the proper signatures, but we have made corrections for that for future years. And the last finding was for the public hearing of sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials that has to occur by the eighth week of the school year. We did miss it for the twenty twenty-one year, but we have made corrections for all future years as well.
Okay, does, and you want to have questions?
Yes, I do. On the private schools, Zach, could you explain what that is and how many private schools do we have in our district?
I don't have the number of private schools in our areas that I can look into and get back to you on that. But based on the Title I funds, we have to make an offer to them to order items on their behalf or services. This one in particular, we had to offer four thousand dollars out of our share of the funds.
The private schools, trustee Turner, second.
Okay. Also, if you can look at page ninety, I mean, I'm sorry, eighty, is that? Could you talk about that?
Oh, sure, page eighty?
Yes.
These are findings from prior years. There are, I'm going to go through those. For the first time, audit, our finding, that was reconciliations of our Zion accounts. We are tracking them more efficiently this year, and on the right side of that page, it shows that whether they were implemented or not implemented. Now it shows those implemented and corrected for last year. The second finding was the instruction material, public hearing. That's a repeat finding from prior year into twenty-one, twenty twenty-one also.
So what are we doing to make sure that we stay compliant? It's been two years in a row. So how are we monitoring that?
For future years, we'll make sure we have it done by the eighth week of school. We do all have it on our agendas and calendars. Make sure we don't miss it again.
And on page eighty-two? Could you talk about that finding?
On page eighty-two, this was in regards to our Aces attendance reconciliations. For the year twenty twenty-one, they were not looking at our attendance records due to the hold harmless.
Now, have we addressed that issue? So what do you, you know, what we put in place to address that?
Offhand, I do not, but I can check on it for you.
Okay. You know, and like you said, overall, it is a good finding. There's no basically financial concerns from the auditor. So, but I just wanted to make sure that we address that and it's not be placed on our consent agenda. So we need to have that every year on, on new business.
Absolutely. We're happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, so I will need a vote to approve this.
Trustee Eckus?
Aye.
Trustee La French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Webster?
Trustee Webster, aye.
And Trustee Ben?
Ben's eye, okay, mo- motion passes five zero. Okay, move, moving on to eleven point four fourteen, which is the administrative new hire. I need a motion to approve.
Webster, motion to approve.
Okay. And, okay, I guess second. Okay, thank, thank, thank you. I, I wanted to bring this up because I wanted to, you know, thank, thank John for step, stepping up and go, going into Ted, Ted Vic and, you know, creating a positive and vibe, vibe environment at that, that school. She brings a lot of positive and energy. And I just wanted to, to show that, you know, good, good things are happening at Ted Vic. And I wanted to congratulate her in, in her appointment. And we are open for discussion, so trustees, if you want anything to say?
I would just like to say congratulations again on your new appointment. I know you're not new to the district, but you're new to the principalship and wish you all the luck. And I know that you'll do well, continue to do well. You've been doing well.
Okay. Okay, so I will get a vote?
Trustee Ben, I believe Trustee Webster was going to speak, but I don't know if she was muted.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to take a moment and tell Jan that it's so exciting to hear that she was up and there was already somebody in mind. And I'm really excited to, to move forward on this one, so congratulations. And I can't wait to meet you on your school site and everything. And I can't wait to see what we can do or you can do. So welcome and congratulations.
Okay.
To say congratulations and thank you for all you've already done. Thank you. We appreciate you.
Yeah, same thing from Trustee Eckus. Thank you.
Okay, now can I get, get a vote? Thanks, Z.
You're welcome. Trustee Eckus?
Aye.
Trustee La French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Webster?
Trustee Webster, aye.
Trustee Ben?
And Ben's eye, motion passes five zero. Okay, so then we move on to my eleven point eighteen, my missing one, which is the classified resignation for the purpose of retirement. And can I get a motion to approve? Okay, I will give the motion to Trustee Turner and the second to Trustee Eckus. And now we are open for discussion. So I pulled this because I heard that Ms. LVV, that she built the school, that she's been there, and, and she's, she is the, the heart and soul of the school there. And I, I am so proud that she has been with our district, and I know that she will be missed in, at, at her, her school. But I also wish her the best in her new leg in life and in whatever she chooses to do. So that's me. Trustees?
Yes, I would like to say to Ms. Gomez, congratulations on retiring. You know, you've worked hard over the years, and I don't know how many years you've been with us, but I know it's a lot. So enjoy your time with your family and enjoy your time not getting up early in the morning, going to your school site, but I know we will probably be seeing you around, and that's a good thing. So again, congratulations on your retirement. Enjoy your life. Thank you.
Okay, Trustee Webster?
I'll keep it short, but I do want to extend my gratitude to Ms. Gomez and everything she's donated, or not donated, but dedicated to the school. And I just want you to know, we appreciate you. At the end of the day, so much appreciation goes out, especially to workers who have been with us so long. We're going to be so sad to lose you. I wish I had a little bit more time to get to know you, but once again, just thank you so much for your time and your service to this district.
Okay, Trustee La French?
I just want to say congratulations, congratulations. Wish it was to me.
Trustee Eckus?
Yes, congratulations and thank you so much for being part of our family. We're going to miss you. Thank you.
Okay, all right, so can, can I please get, get a vote?
Trustee Eckus?
Aye.
Trustee La French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Webster?
Trustee Webster, aye.
Trustee Ben?
And Ben's eye, motion passes five zero. Okay, so now we will go, go on to staff reports and presentations. Thirteen point zero zero one, business services conduct second reading of special tax ordinance, now number twenty-one point twenty-two point sixteen for community facilities, district number four of the Odd Lonto Elementary School District.
Board, we have Jesse Landry from CFS to walk the board through this again. This is another matter regarding our CFP number four.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Jesse Landry. I'm with Key Analytics CFS. Pleasure to be here in front of you tonight, and I just want to take a step back and thank the board for all the work that they've done on the CFP for change proceedings. I know it's a lot of documentation and a lot of things going back and forth, so thank you to the board for processing all these. We're just about wrapped up now for those change proceedings that we started back in December of last year. And also a thanks to Mr. Kraus and his staff. I know they were doing a lot of stuff internally and processing all that documentation. So, so quickly, we did our first reading back at the last meeting. This is a second reading of the ordinance. This is a second reading of the ordinance. So for this item, similar to what we did last time, I'd asked that the board make a motion to do this, perform the second reading by reading the title only. That way we can save ourselves the, the trouble of having to reading, reading the entirety of this, this whole ordinance. So if someone could make a motion to conduct our second reading by reading of the title only, then get that second and approved and then just read the title. And that's all we need to do for this item. And then we'll come back to it and actually adopt it through a later item in the business section.
Okay, so I need.
So you are, so Trusty Benz has already read the title. Is it, is that correct, Jesse?
Yeah, she has. I think, I think what we did this time is just make that motion to be able to, just as a legal procedural item to check it off the list to just say, we're, we're reading this by only reading the title. We're conducting our second reading.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion. I'll motion. Ordinance number twenty-one dash point twenty-two point sixteen, ordinance of community facility district number four of the Adalanta Elementary School District authorizing the levy of special tax within the community facility district number four.
Can I get a sec- second?
I second.
Okay. And we need a vote?
No vote, no vote, no vote necessary on this. We'll, we'll vote actually in the business section later to formally adopt.
Okay. Okay, I'm just used, used to that. I just go through the mo- motion. Okay. Okay, so then we have to go down to thirteen point zero, zero two. Um, academic ser- server services presentation of professional learning and collab elaboration plans. Dr. Dwyson, I believe?
So I'll, I'll start off, Dr.
Thank you.
So, so thank you, trustees. Last year, we had our schools present their, their professional learning and collaboration plans. And so this year, we, we're back at it again with a little bit deeper work. The schools have had a little bit more time to implement some strategies to, to improve staff and student performance at our schools. That's what we're after. And so we'll have Dr. Dwyson give a review and then introduce our schools.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Mr. Asuma, if you would allow me to share my screen? All right. Good evening, Board Trustees. President Benz, Board of Trustees, Dr. Mitchell, Cabinet, AESD Staff and Community. I'm excite- excited to present to you tonight an overview of our professional learning and collaboration plans, followed by school updates by three of our outstanding schools this evening. Westside Park, Morgan Kincaid Preparatory Academy and Columbia Middle School. These schools are the first three, who, who, over the next three months, will give you updates, progress and accomplishments on their professional learning and collaboration plan implementation. The objective of this presentation is to provide an overview of the professional learning and collaboration plan, introduce and provide an overview of the appreciative learning cycle and provide an update of the implementation and progress of the professional learning plan, which we shorten it to the PLCP at our school sites through the lens of professional learning, professional collaboration, instructional supervision and performance management systems. I would like to begin with how we focus our work and our learning as the site instructional leaders to implement this work at the school sites. So site leaders meet twice a month to learn and grow together based on the following visual before you. You'll notice in this graphic that there's an arrow and the three items in that arrow are theory of action, clarity of goals and alignment of the activity. Our theory of action or our foundational beliefs are such that we believe in growing the skill and knowledge of all of our staff. That includes administrators, teachers and our support personnel. We set goals that are focused on teacher practice and we align all of our systems. This is professional learning and collaboration, instructional supervision and performance management systems, which will result in improved student performance. Simply put, we grow by investing in building the knowledge, skill and capacity on our staff. This slide breaks down the four elements of the professional learning and collaboration plan or the PLCP in detail and what that looked like as a district for us this year in our first year of implementation. Sorry about that. So the professional learning plan is actually broken up into four areas: professional learning, professional collaboration, instructional supervision and performance management. So this slide breaks down the four elements of the professional learning and collaboration plan in detail and what that looked like. And you'll notice that there are some highlights in blue. And that is what we were able to put in place during our first year of implementation of our PLCP. So our schools collaboratively came up with their focus areas with their individual staffs. And so looking at these four areas as leader of a school, I'm asking, how do I take these folk I and see it all the way through to action steps to see it in the classrooms? So the first element is professional learning and specifically which strategies, approaches or mindsets will teachers learn, refine and implement with high fidelity and quality. These we call our success criteria to accelerate student outcomes. And so highlighted in blue, you'll see that professional development aligned to the folk eyes. So each school picked a folk I to focus on. So as a real example, so if I, if my school focus is strengthening foundational skills in reading, we as a staff may need to revisit foundational routines, mainly maybe talk about daily extended time for phonemic awareness and phonics, guided reading or small group instruction and shared reading experiences. I would schedule these topics and times for learning on the professional development days that I have for my staff. The second element is professional collaboration and questions. And I might ask, how might we design teacher collaboration to provide a forum for teachers to apply professional learning in classroom practice, improve personal and collective practice and plan action steps in response to student outcomes? In the blue, you will see that teacher collaboration opportunities were put in place this year. Opportunities to learn more about the folk I in deeper understanding are taking place in our schools. So many schools have professional development opportunities after hours. Some also have Saturday opportunities and the teachers have been invested in taking part in these learning activities. So in the example that I gave you before of strengthening foundational skills and reading, as a principal, I might have a Saturday reading academy series or after school opportunities in which we practice and learn those routines and research-based strategies. And then we can make a lesson plan together to present it to the class, to the students. So the third element you see is the instructional feedback, which asks, how might we assess and monitor teacher practice using professional learning folk I to provide feedback about the impact of professional learning and collaboration on teacher practice? So this current year, we specifically have taken a deep dive into feedback during our site leadership meetings in which we have learned from renowned feedback expert Robert Ja- Robin Jackson and specifically dived into the appreciative inquiry cycle, which I'll explain a little in deeper and just on the next slide. So this element of feedback is designed to support our administrators to give rich and descriptive feedback to our teachers. So continuing the example of that I gave you of strengthening foundational skills as my folk I, I as the administrator now will observe my teachers. So we've been on this learning journey. I go in, I, I observe my teachers and then I can give appreciative and specific feedback back to our teachers. And then the final element of the PLCP is performance management. And this question asks, what key performance indicators of student progress will we use to measure the impact of teacher practice on student outcomes? So the key here is measuring teacher practice and how do we know it's working? How do we know that the professional learning that we're putting in place is working? So we measure this through appreciative inquiry, classroom observation and survey feedback. Are we meeting the needs of what the teachers need? And is what I'm doing have a positive, having a positive impact? And are my teachers stronger in their lo- knowledge of the folk I that we identified on the last day of school compared to the first day of school? So this year, this slide shows our appreciative inquiry model that we've been putting in place during site leadership meetings. And we have been taking a deep dive into the instructional supervision piece as the instructional leader of the school to give descriptive and rich feedback. So we've engaged in appreciative inquiry cycles at our school sites among our administrators. And in this cycle of learning, there's five steps that we've put in place. So step one is a research deep dive. So we are given a commonly, we're giving a common language to the best practices in certain areas. So it could be ELD. It could be student engagement. Because we know that when we give feedback, we want to richly describe what we see so that it can be understood by all. We know, we are now building a common language across the district because site leaders are going and doing this process together. So this allows us to create that common language across our district and across our schools. Step two is the host school. So usually we're at a host school and they give us an overview of their site, including the PLCP folk I and current practices. And we're just so appreciative of the, the teachers and the, the staff for allowing us to come in and learn together. Step three, we then break up into small groups and we go and we visit classes. So we, and we are very careful. We adhere to professional norms so that we can build trust. What we're working to do is build a collaborative learning community. And so we, we don't use names, we don't use identifiers. We only write down what are those effective practices that we're seeing. Hence the appreciative inquiry title that you have in front of you. Step four in the cycle is coming together to debrief. And this is the most powerful moment of the cycle because we're able to calibrate our language to help the, the school richly describe what we see. And so the goal of appreciative inquiry is to use the feedback and give, share and discuss it with the teachers and staff. But ideally replicate those best practices across the campus. All aligned to their designated folk I. It creates shared language and common prac- practices to allow the team to excel. And then that final step is that we're building a year-long reflective journal. And we want to be able to, within that journal, what are those action steps? And so this helps us to be accountable to our own learning as we go through this cycle with our site leaders. So this slide demonstrates our schools and their folk I. And so in those notebooks that we handed out, I believe it was a few weeks ago or last month, you have the, each site's professional learning plan in detail within those binders. But this slide demonstrates our schools and their folk I areas. And twelve out of the fourteen have reading and literacy that they've chosen as their focus. And this is a broad topic. And so listed in one through four are the majority of areas being focused on. So you would expect this as primary grades are learning to read. And there's a difference when you hit that transition into second, beginning of third grade where you begin to read to learn. And so ELA, ELD foundational skills and routines, we have many that start with that focus. We have reading comprehension strategies, academic vocabulary and writing all fall within the realm of reading as the focus. So additionally, you have teacher clarity, which is that umbrella. This is the lesson design, making sure that I have clear objectives when I teach my students and collective efficacy. So how I feel in my work as I'm giving information has, plays a big part in how we deliver instruction. So you have, as an elementary district, the collective voice of our schools has spoken here. And it speaks to the fact that reading is a priority in our schools. It is the priority in our schools and our need to make sure that all of our students are reading by the third grade. So this final slide shows which schools over the next few months will be presenting. We're excited, they're excited. And just to share the information with you and their updates. And at this time, I want to take time to introduce the three schools this evening that will be presenting. We will have time for questions after each one. But we'll begin with Westside Park with Principal Adriana Pantoja. We have Morgan Kincaid Preparatory Academy with Principal Kristen Cooper and Columbia Middle School with Principal Rich Upshaw. And so after each school, we'll pause to see if the Board of Trustees has any questions for our presenting principals. And so right now, I will stop my share. And I believe we'll turn it over to Ms. Pantoja.
Good evening. Can you see my presentation?
Yeah, yes ma'am.
Good evening, Board President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Mitchell and Cabinet. My name is Adriana Pantoja and I'm honored to share with you Westside Park School Professional Learning and Collaboration Plan as well as the growth that our staff has accomplished so far this school year. Westside Park School has made huge improvements. This school year, we were recognized with the silver level for PBIS. Our site has been the showcase for neighboring districts as well as within our own district. In addition, we have received a three-year early literacy block grant. The grant is integrated into our site PLCP plan. As a site, we strongly believe that the action plans for our professional learning and collaboration plan will open the doors, the mindset and the potential to improve students' outcome, achievements, teacher lesson instruction and community participation. As you may recall, our site professional learning and collaboration plan was created collectively from staff survey to determine and analyze the needs of our unique school site. Our leadership team continues to meet to discuss the plan and the performance management needed to achieve success. The staff is committed to our folk I. Our first folk I is literacy, strategies for learning to read, fundamental skills and guided reading. The second folk I is math improvement and development of concepts and procedures using the math standards for mathematical practices. Understanding our community, we knew that social emotional learning was a must to assure students' learning and to provide teachers with the tools to build relationships as well as trust with our students and parents. In our professional learning and collaboration plan, we provided teachers with tier one, tier two and tier three professional development to enhance the lesson design in ELA and in math, both in which are infused with social emotional learning. We incorporated the importance of mindset and relationship building, incorporated positive behavior intervention supports, restorative practice, mindfulness and social skills. Weekly, the teachers are reminded of the look for us for success lesson delivery. During collaboration, the teachers discuss basics for excellence as they share best teaching practices. As administration conducts appreciative increase, the focus is on delivery of instruction and the student's performance. During every professional development, we discuss a success criteria, paying close attention to what it looks like in the teacher preparation of the lesson and the tools, as well as the strategies needed to assure that all the students are learning. We focus on the importance of planning, the use of instructional strategies that allow for teachers to check for understanding, model think alouds and use of thinking maps to organize content. Not only are we focusing on teachers' actions, we're also looking at students' behaviors. Students will be ready to learn and will be engaged, will be engaged and held accountable for their own learning and behavior. They will have opportunities to read and respond to texts. They will cite evidence and annotate the text to show their understanding. They will cite evidence and annotate the text to show their understanding. Students will use multiple thinking maps to organize their thoughts in language arts and in math. Sorry, my mouse is. In order for learning to take place, there has to be collaborative time where teachers can plan and practice what they have learned during professional development. Our site professional learning and collaboration plan has allocated time to practice, refine, and collaborate the learning. Teachers now feel comfortable sharing best teaching practices by welcoming their colleagues into their classroom to observe and learn from each other. We have embedded time during Tuesday professional development to allow teachers to teach each other and share tools to differentiate learning to meet the needs of all students. During collaboration, teachers share what they've learned in the course of the classroom visitations. We have experts in thinking apps, Hagrid and standard-based curriculum modeling lessons for teachers and providing feedback. For every professional development, we are requiring evidence that the learning is being incorporated in the teaching and learning. During appreciative inquiries, we see evidence in the planning of instruction, the delivery of high-quality instruction, students' work samples, and discussions in the shared notes to administration after grade-level collaboration meetings. Daily classroom visits by administration are conducted to support teachers to plan effective professional development. Weekly feedback via emails are provided to teachers to share the highlights of what was observed. As educational leaders, Vanessa Freeman and I have become familiar with the basics for excellence and success criteria to set expectations and clear accountability. Teachers are receiving extra pay to collaborate with their grade levels as they as they lesson plan instruction to share teaching practices, tools, and explicit direct instruction. Teachers use the scope and sequence document, grade level standards, and the curriculum pacing guide as they plan their lessons. The teacher deliver delivers high-quality instruction based on professional development, learning, success criteria, and basics for excellence. Administration meets with leadership team regularly to support with purposeful teacher collaboration, which focus on data and research-based instructional practices. Social emotional learning through weekly lesson plans, culture proficiency lessons, as well as activities are conducted to support the emotional needs of our students and teachers. The key performance indicators to make sure our plan is successful includes daily classroom observations using success criteria and focus on site folk I professional learning and collaboration plan. We provide observational best teaching practices to leadership to string instructional instruction during collaboration and call teaching. We inform teachers of expectations and create memos to highlight best teaching practices. We have data chats to discuss claims and targets and best teaching practices. It is clear that the staff at Westside Park Elementary School has a growth mindset. The staff has persevered through distance learning and learned innovative practices to reach to reach learners. Our school, our strong and dedicated leadership team continues to plan and learn research-based strategies to support their grade levels. Our amazing PBIS team continues to create safe weekly activities to promote positive behavior at our school. The experts are continuing to model lessons via Zoom as well as in-person to support lesson delivery. We are continuing with parent committees such as monthly coffee with administration, delight meetings, school side council meetings, and parent workshops. We can honestly say that we are better today than the first day of school. All of the thing, all of these things I mentioned, I would like to highlight Westside Park's wins. Using the professional learning from Christine Anderson Brilliance Project, teachers begin and end lessons with clear instruction objectives that are written in student-friendly language. These expectations are posted and shared with students so that they have a clear, sorry, so they have clarity about what is being taught. Using effective learning for professional developments and best teaching practices, teachers collaborate with grade-level colleagues to lesson plan using the background planning process to plan well-designed lessons. We follow the curriculum department calendar for for professional development. Not only do we have professional developments on Tuesday at Westside Park, we have volunteer Saturday sessions. Teachers are planning path to proficiency to become experts in supporting our English language learners and providing them with the strategies to show growth that leads them to reclassification. Use, um, Westside Park is using DIBO assessments kindergarten through fifth grade to understand the literacy needs of each student and prepare instruction that will support their growth. We are partnering with parents to provide literacy workshops to support parents in developing the home and school connection for the success of their children. We are bringing literacy to the home as we build home libraries. Parents will receive several books as they attend workshops. We have incorporated the one school, one book program to promote the love for reading one book at a time. Parents, all staff, classified and certificated, and students read the book together and receive prizes for answering comprehension questions. Teachers model reading fluency and focus on literacy strategies. The whole school has a shared reading experience that enrich, that continues to their home. With the early literacy block grant and CSI grant, we were able to create an intervention and enrichment program. The intervention and enrichment teacher focuses on addressing learning gaps and creating opportunities for our students to extend their learning. We are continuing to use Hagrid to build pandemic awareness to create a solid foundation for reading success. Thinking maps are used as a visual language for students to organize their thinkings and their thinking in all academic areas. Math practices are used with fidelity to improve lesson delivery as well as students' learning. We are happy to continue with our after-school program, coding, and the new robotic program for Millionaire's Mind Kids. I would like to thank Vanessa Freeman, the leadership team, our school side council, and the entire staff at Westside Park Elementary School for working together as a team to support our students, parents, and community. Additionally, I would like to say thank you to the board, Dr. Mitchell, and Cabinet for your support of Westside Park Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank, they, thank you. Uh, trustees, do you have quick questions? Uh, trustee Turner?
Um, yes, thank you. It's not telling you for your um report, as always, it's amazing. Um, I was following your presentation with um your um and a book that we received based on what's going on at your school. And it follows it to almost to the T. But my question is, I'm looking at your profession, your professional learning and collaboration pa- plan in the book. And maybe Dr. Mitchell, you can, you can answer this. It says twenty twenty, school year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. So is this what was presented, is this twenty-one, twenty-two school year? Because we have dates in the back.
Yeah, so, so fir- first of all, um, principals, what trustee is referring to is that the board has a notebook of all of your professional learning plans. Uh, and to answer your question, trustee Turner, uh, these, these plans were developed as multi-year plans. I'm a strong boat going deep over a few years. One of the problems with public schools is that we jump, uh, we jump initiatives every year. And we never get a chance to go deep in anything or determine if it works and why it works. And so I, so when we initially developed these plans, these plans were three-year plans. Um, so, so, of course, they can't accomplish the whole plan in one year. So they've scoped it out over three years and so you'll see much, and it's a good thing to see them staying focused on uh, on the same thing. Because of the idea that I keep telling principals is that we want our schools to be in and out and not jacking the marks. We want to get good at a few things, um, as opposed to being masters of nothing and doing a whole lot of uh, ac- activity and confusing activity for uh, for, for progress. So, so I hope that answers your question.
Okay, so in other words, it should say twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three?
Absolutely, we should, we should update those, so thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Okay, um, I have a question, how often are we measuring student success?
We're, um, actually, we're going into the classrooms daily. We are highlighting what is working. We are meeting with teachers as well. We know we've been really short with um subs, but we've been really creative to making sure that the teachers are able to share the data, discuss the data, discuss best teaching practices. So every Tuesday, we do have about two hours or two and a half when it's not an early um dismissal for teachers. And we incorporate what they've learned and allow time for the teachers to practice. So it would be uh, maybe three times a month. But additional when they have, and they also have two hours for collaboration time.
And so data is pulled like three times a month to show progress? Okay, and is that data shared with the parent in any way?
The data is shared with their parents when um they meet with the teacher as well. Um, our, for example, our kinder has a ESGI, which is really easy for the parents to read. They share with them during parent-teacher conferences. When uh, we have SST, which we're continuing to have, it's always shared with um parents. So they could understand what is going on and what are the needs and what are the interventions and the preventions? And also the engagement, where we're not only focusing on minimizing the gap, but we're also focusing on enrichment.
Great, thank you. Now, are the students surveyed? I know in um Dr. DeWise's on report, she talked about survey. Are students surveyed at all?
We survey the students with our PBIS because they're younger, but we do survey our teachers to make sure that what um we are looking at in our plan is working.
Okay, okay, that's all I have, thank you, thank you so much, that was great.
Thank you.
Uh, trustee Ek- Ekis? Trustee Ek- Ekis, do you have quick questions?
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, now, now I can.
I'm so sorry, um, yes, that was a really good report, thank you, no, I have no questions, thank you.
Okay. Trusty Web- Webster?
Um, I would like to just start by thanking Ms. I'm sorry if I butcher this, Pantoja?
Yes, Pantoja.
Thank you so much for your presentation, I really enjoyed it. Um, I don't really have any questions, but um, good job, thank you.
Okay, uh, trustee La- La French?
Thank you very much for this presentation, I always enjoy, I'm going over to Westside Park and watching all of the different um activities and stuff that you guys have, I appreciate it, it's very um, lots and lots, lots of information and um, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, and I would like, like to say, I, I really enjoyed your prep presentation. I enjoyed how you are incorporate, incorporate rating the parent, parents with the re- reading and says sending book, books home and trying to create um home li- library. I think that's an excellent i- idea. Um, so that you know, the, the stu- students can still read and hopefully that that spark for read, 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 reading, you know, li- lights of five, fire. And I true truly thank, thank you for, for this.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Dr. Mi- Mitchell?
I, I think you will, we'll turn it back over to Dr. DeWise, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Pantoja, for your presentation. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Kristen Cooper to come up, she's principal of Morgan Kincaid. So Kristen, there you go.
Let me share a screen real quick here. There we go, can we see that? We al- we always have to check, right? Because our view is different than everyone else. Perfect, um, good evening, Board President Benz, members of the board, Dr. Mitchell and Cabinet. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to share with you some of the amazing work being done at Morgan Kincaid. Staff and students have demonstrated great resiliency returning from distance learning. There's many obstacles to overcome with COVID and quarantines, but we continue to move forward, remaining focused on providing the best educational opportunities possible for our students to ensure their future success. So the professional learning and collaboration plan remains a constant in helping us stay focused on our goals. At the end of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, the staff reflected on our plan. We conducted surveys, completed confidence ratings, and collaborated and discussed next steps. Through this process, the staff ultimately decided to keep moving forward with our originally established reading and math folk I. Teachers shared they were feeling confident in implementing reading and math strategies with an eighty percent confidence rating. Continued professional development was identified as the greatest need to continue raising confidence levels and to continue moving our students forward academically. Our first learning folk I remains implementing targeted reading strategies based on student needs to increase fluency and comprehension skills of students. In the primary grades, the focus may be more on fluency and the upper grades on comprehension. But based on student needs is key. This means getting to know each student and identifying their individual areas of need and targeting instruction to build the skills necessary for each student to grow as a reader. So this isn't to say that primary grade students will not be working on comprehension and an upper grade student will not be working on fluency, it will in fact be based on their needs. These targeted reading strategies may include listening to the students read fluency passages, small reading groups, one-on-one meets with students, close reading, think alouds, activating prior knowledge, predicting, rereading passages, making inferences, daily phonics, and utilizing Lexia, Maion, and accelerated reader. These are some of the instructional strategies we would see in the classroom and these are the areas of focus for our professional development. The second folk I is for teachers to develop the standards of mathematical practices in their students by identifying areas of needs for students and targeting instruction to develop needed skills. There are eight standards for mathematical practice. One, make sense of problems and persevere in solving them. Two, reason abstractly and quantitatively, or in other words, solving a problem in more than one way. Three, construct viable arguments and critique the reasoning of others. So this means they can explain the math, their math thinking. Four, model with mathematics and manipulatives. Five, use appropriate tools strategically. Six, attend to precision. Seven, look for and make use of structure, or use what you know to solve new problems. And eight, look for and express regularity in repeated reasoning, so finding the patterns to help solve problems. And again, we acknowledge the importance of getting to know our students to best teach them and see where they need this help. So when entering a classroom or planning professional development in the area of math, these are some of the practices we would look for. The use of academic vocabulary, teacher think aloud and students explaining their own thinking, small group instruction in mass centers, partner work, modeling, use of manipulatives, use of whiteboards and flashcards, and incorporating reflex in IXL for reinforcement. Collaboration is a key element in maintaining our focus and moving forward. Teachers most often use this time to compare and share resources, discuss problems and solutions, discuss best practices, what ideas and strategies are working best in their classrooms, solicit support and ideas for teaching and behavioral concerns, provide an opportunity to be on the same page and creating alignment. After collaboration, it's time to take the best practices that have been discussed and implement them into their classrooms. When we visit classrooms during informal walkthroughs and formal observations, we're able to see these strategies being utilized. Through the appreciative inquiry process, we're able to look for success criteria and provide feedback. Reflective questions are used in collaboration and during individual feedback to help strengthen and refine implementation of best practices. After implementing these best practices, we need to see if the identified strategies are in fact having a positive impact on student outcomes. We use multiple data points to monitor student growth and the effectiveness of interventions. We have used the SWOT form to identify strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. We use an after-school intervention progress monitoring form with baseline and final scores. We monitor star scores to check for growth. These results are analyzed to create action plans and identify next steps. This hard data is combined with indicators such as student engagement and classroom environment. Student success is at the core of our culture. Our PLCs, PBIS, Student success is at the core of our culture. Our P L C's, P B I S program and implementation of Avid. All contribute to our culture and our work at Morgan Kincaid. Combined with our P L C P, we continue to follow our school motto and always go forward. When teachers were asked if we have a professional culture that fosters improved student performance as a result of our P L C P. Their responses said it best. Responses included, yes, the P L C P constantly guides us which results and improves student performance. And absolutely, as a grade level and our school overall, we all offer ideas to each other to make sure that all students are learning. Reaching and succeeding their academics in all areas. Sharing academic concerns of students in the grade above or the grade below my current grade is really powerful. In seeing greater improvement for all of our students. Through the dedication and hard work of our teachers here at Morgan Kincaid, there are many successes to celebrate. By teacher requests, we have continued our math training with Pilty LLC. There is an increased focus on explaining mathematical thinking. Using academic vocabulary and using manipulatives as a result. We are looking forward to beginning the core reading training with program approval from tonight's board meeting. So thank you. Core reading will help teachers understand and identify what barriers students are facing and what their needs are to improve their reading. We will continue to collaborate and learn from each other. We will continue increasing small group intervention time within the day. And after school with the help of our classified staff and our teachers. We will continue monitoring student growth and progress. Our teamwork will continue to move us forward professionally and our students forward academically. I am so grateful to have a staff that focuses on students, supports each other and is willing to work together. So again, a big shout out to my teachers, my classified staff, Mr. Wilson, my A A and all of your support. So thank you again to the board, Dr. Mitchell and Cabinet for giving me the time to share about Morgan Kincaid.
All right, thank, thank you so, so much. Um trustees, uh questions. Let's start with trustee Webster.
Oh, on the spot.
Yeah, I I I try to mi- mix it up. So you're far first now.
Uh I'll take it. I'll take it with stride. Um so I want to start off, uh Principal Cooper. I just want to comment that I I really liked the comment on the the. Collaboration of like grade levels above and below, since we're able to kind of reflect on that data. And just like the other one, it it seems like you're doing great. Keep it up. Thank you and we appreciate you.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Okay, uh trustee Ek Ek Ekis.
Yeah, that was a great report. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh trustee Turner Turner.
Uh Ms. Cooper, as always, um I love your reports. I'm happy are doing well and it's a plan, you know, for increased um academic success. Um I love this book. Again, you know, your your presentation. Correspond with, you know, the book. We have on your um. We promise as well as, you know, you're surveying students and their academic performance and teacher development. And over the years, years ago, teachers wanted professional development and now you guys are getting a lot and also um. Um collaboration time. So I could see us growing even though we're in the midst of a pandemic and, you know, we did. Basically, last year was a learning process for everyone. I'm happy to see that we are, we have a plan for growth. For our students and our teachers and our entire district. So thank you again for your presentation. It was awesome.
Thank you.
Trust trustee La La French.
Wow, I get to go last. It feels great. Thank you, Ms. Cooper. I appreciate your presentation. My heart is always with uh Morgan and um you guys are doing a fantastic job. As usual, thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Hey, Principal Co- Cooper, I want to thank, thank you for the presentation. The information, it really ge- gets me excited for what's to to come. Um you know, seeing that, you know, all the work, you know, the staff work, working to to get. Get together and I can't, I can't wait till we hear again the 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 improvement that that's hap-. Happening at at your your school and I want to thank you and your staff for ev- everything you you are do- doing. For stu- students.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh did I call e- everybody? I think I called everybody. Okay, I just, I had a thought that I missed somebody and it was like, okay, um Dr. Mitchell. Or Doc Dr. Doizan.
Um so last but certainly not least, Mr. Uh Principal of Columbia Middle School, Mr. Rich Upshaw. So we'll turn it over to you, Rich.
Hello and good evening. Okay, good evening, President Vance, board members, Dr. Mitchell and Cabinet, special welcome to board member Webster. I am Richard Upshaw, principal, proud principal at Columbia Middle School. Thank you for this opportunity for me to give you an update on our progress on our professional learning and collaboration plan. Before we get started, I'd like to acknowledge my assistant principals, Carla Hamilton Yates, Christie Phillip. And I see several of our staff members here. Thank you for supporting and we do expect you to be on time in the morning. Um uh as you know, Dr. Mitchell has tasked the sites to develop a professional learning and collaboration plan. With input from the staff to improve the educational practice at the sites. After multiple surveys, staff meetings, our staff voted to establish the two following folk I for Columbia Middle School. We have chosen growth mindset and critical reading strategies. I will discuss how our folk I will improve our professional collaboration, our teaching practice, our instructional feedback, our performance management. And our school culture. I will also identify our successes and our wins. Our collaboration development, we surveyed our staff first in April of twenty twenty one. Sixty one percent of our staff agreed or strongly agreed that we designed the professional development to support teacher collaboration and learning. Again, in January of twenty twenty two, we surveyed our staff and found that sixty five percent agreed or strongly agreed. That we designed the professional development to support teacher collaboration and learning. Book guy are identified as growth mindset and critical reading strategy. Growth mindset is the belief that intelligent is not fixed but can be developed. Students with a growth mindset score higher in reading, mathematics and science. They display lower levels of fear of failure. More likely to have a positive outlook on life associated with a larger score gain for girls disadvantaged and immigrant students. Teaching a growth mindset in schools decreases the negative effects of biased perceptions and aspirations. It also promotes the equity and bridges the performance gap between two different groups of students. Critical reading. When a reader applies certain processes, models and theories that result in enhanced comprehension. We chose the model of the ACE model where across curriculum and schoolwide, uh teachers are teaching. To A, answer the question, C, cite the evidence, and E, explain and expand. I want to emphasize, we are working on our teachers' professional development. As Dr. Mitchell emphasizes to site administration. We are the teachers for our staff and they are the teachers for our students. Our growth mindset folk I is a professional development in the area of leader and need, which emphasizes the seven habits of successful people. We are focusing on the following habits. We want our teachers to be proactive. Begin with the end in mind, put first things first and think win-win. We want our teachers to create choices, to use organizational tools, to provide clear expectations, to collaborate with their colleagues. And we want our students ultimately to develop the unique gifts, plan with a purpose in mind, prioritize. Do what you have to do to do what you want to do. We want them to learn to listen to other points of view, which is especially important. In these times that we are in today. Our teachers' professional collaboration design is to do, study, act and plan. What you see on the screen is a sample of the collaboration forms that our teachers fill out every time they have collaboration. This form helps them to develop an area which will help them to identify an area of focus that they all agree upon. And that's strategies in which they will promote that focus or reach that goal. They also identify the target students that they will implement that focus on and then list all the strategies and various ideas. That they might do as well as who will have each job and performing the various tasks such as which teachers will do. What the department chairs might need to do and what they might need from administration. This is how we perform, a do, study and act plan at Columbia Middle School through our professional development and collaboration time. In our professional development, in our staff meetings, in department meetings as well as grade level meetings. We provide first a list of all the praise for the accomplishments that they have achieved. We look at the classroom management and how the growth that students might have achieved in their test scores and their student successes. That the teachers might have encouraged or given the students personal attention and building relationship. We probe our teachers by asking questions, guiding questions as facilitators in order for them to think deeper and to teach deeper. So that our students learn and master the material. We identify what problems or area of focus we might have and how we will change it and make it better. What action steps must we take in order to continuously improve? We allow the teacher to take time to practice all of these skills and then provide feedback through their practice. It is an appreciative inquiry that we provide the area of practice. Teachers also learn how to plan ahead through the lesson plan and to plan backwards because we look at where we want to go. So we plan ahead in order to get there. We set timelines so that all agree upon to ensure equity. And make sure everyone is on the same page. Our key performance management. Our key performance indicators are students award. We have quarterly, semestral, or academic awards and behavior and citizenship awards. We check our student attendance rates. We uh look to achieve uh improvement in our cash annual testing. We want to have as many E L students reclassified through the E L P A C process. We look to improve our scores in our uh quarterly and semestral, the star reading and math. And we hope to this uh reduce the amount of off-campus discussions. Again, survey results are very important and we continue to survey both our staff. Yes. Let me interrupt you for a second. Are you all hearing feedback?
Yes, I am.
Yes, back. I think it's on your end. Well, trustee Turner, can you mute to see if that's you?
I'll mute mute mine.
I'll mute mine. So yeah, Rich, we're hearing some deep feedback. It might be from you. Let, let Kate say something, Rich.
Uh can you hear me now? Is there any feedback?
That sounds better. Do you guys hear feedback anymore? Okay, perfect. Sorry, sorry to disturb you, Rich.
Oh, it's okay. I'll continue with this school culture and continue with the slideshow. Okay, so we again surveyed our staff in April of twenty twenty one and. It is important for us to develop leaders on our campus. In April of twenty twenty one, we surveyed our staff and seventy five percent of our staff. Thought that our our professional development built relationship, developed people and distributes leadership. Again, we surveyed in January of twenty twenty two and we had an increase to seventy eight percent. Where seventy eight percent of our staff strongly or agreed that we, our staff development built relationship, developed people and distributed the leadership. This is how we measured our successes. We have decreased suspensions. We have increased our social emotional. Uh activities, including our school dances. All of our staff are trained in the leader in need program. Um our staffing is up to date. We had a ninety eight percent star completion rate this year. And our students uh S E L needs are addressed through the school counselor as well as uh before, after-school tutoring. Lunchtime tutoring and clubs. Here is a compilation of pictures of the culture at Columbia and I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank, thank you, Ms. Mrs. Mr. Upshaw. Um trustees, questions and or com- comments. Uh trustee Ek Ekis.
Trustee Ekis had the log off. She wasn't feeling well.
Okay, all right. Uh trustee Turner. And you gotta mute. Make sure you're me muted.
I am, I'm sorry. Thank you for your presentation. Um. I'm I'm liking your successes uh in your student involvement. Um and that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you for your report.
Thank you. Uh trustee Web Webster.
Oh, trustee Webster was having some technical problem. She, her sound went out. She's, she's gonna call back in.
I'm back in.
Okay, trust trustee Ek, oh this is here. Okay, trustee Ekis, do you have quite questions or com- comments for Ms. Mr. Upshaw?
No, I don't, hon. I just want to let him know that he's always doing a great job. So thank you.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I believe that, go ahead, trustee Webster. I think she's back on.
Okay. Yes, I'm I'm sorry about that. I did have some technical difficulty uh with my audio, but I did want to comment and say that it was. Definitely an amazing slideshow, Mr. Upshaw, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much and welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, uh trust trustee La La French.
Mr. Upshaw, I wanted to say that um your successes that you mentioned are actually great and fabulous. I like that. I did. Um, let's see. One question I did have for you, the collaboration form that um the teachers fill out while they're collaborating, how often is that done? That was a nice form.
Uh that's done every time we have collaboration. We have a district negotiated collaboration time with the teachers. And uh it's uh they helped formulate it. So it's a collaboration between administration and our teachers, which is great.
Grateful. I'm grateful. And thank you for your presentation.
Okay, uh Mr. Upshaw, I want to thank, 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 thank you for your presentation. I want to say thank you for what you're do- doing for our kids. And I want to say thank you for your folk, folk I be being growth mindset. You know, because our kids, they we, they tend to de- defeat themselves and you know. Te- teachers and the admin, they they can see that the potential in the kids. Unfortunately, the kids don't see it in themselves and for your your staff to agree that that's, that's. A a folk folk I that that they need to to focus on and uh address, I think, is is very. Very import- port- important. So I uh appre- appreciate that. And I also uh pre- appreciate you being transparent, parent, parent, parent and share. Share, sharing the ser- surveys on how, you know, with your your staff in the school called. Cold culture, though some may dis- disagree. It looks like, you know, at first, they're they're start starting to swing the other way. And start to to agree. So thank, thank you.
Thank you, board and cabinet, and we really appreciate your time tonight.
All right, you're welcome. Okay, so and I believe that's Dr. Mitchell. That's it for.
That's all of them. So board, we have uh two or three schools uh that will be presenting similarly over the next few months. We really want to make sure that you guys are aware of uh the great things that are that are that our schools are doing. Uh despite COVID.
Despite COVID and the pandemic and all the challenges that we have. Also wanna thank Dr. Dwyer's on for leading. Uh, this work tonight, uh, we're preparing the presentations. And also wanna tell the board too that Michael Carlos and Tasha, uh, all supervise principals, and so those, those plans are. Come up through the assistant soup's, uh, they coach and give feedback to the principals. Uh, to make sure that the, the strategies they're choosing are ones that will be impactful for both teachers and, and students, so. Uh, we're, we're, I'm just, I'm just really overjoyed to hear how folks are digging in. Uh, this appreciation that, um, uh, that student achievement, it's student achievement. Gets better at the same proportion that our staff does. Uh, this commitment to getting better at all levels is really important to a high achieving school district. I believe that that culture is starting to, uh, to set in a little bit and it's just exciting to see. Uh, it's exciting to be a part of, but it's also exciting to see, uh, folks get the, uh, get to fire. Uh, themselves and have their staff follow suit, so, so thank, uh, thank you, Dr. Dwyer's on your staff. Thanks. Mr. Moran and also thanks to Michael Kraus for leading our principals and so looking forward to the next presentations. Thank you.
Okay, alright, so let's go, go, go on to new, new biz, business, uh, for fourteen point zero one. Approved board resolution, twenty-one point twenty-two point eighteen. Make, making find findings as required by AAB three sixty-one. To permit the Board of Trustees me, meeting to continue to be conducted by teleconference. While, while the COVID nine nineteen emergency remains in place. Can I please get a motion to approve?
Uh, trustee Turner, motion that we continue to, um, um, meet remotely while we're in the midst of the pandemic. Um, I know that the cases are going down, but we're still, it's still very high risk right now.
Okay, can I get a sec, second?
Second, trustee La French.
Okay, we're up, uh, we're open for discussion, discussion? Okay, can, can I get a vote?
Trustee Akis?
Nay.
Trustee La French?
La French, yes.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee Webster?
Uh, trustee Webster, nay.
Trustee Benz?
And Benz, I. Mo- motion pass, passes three, two. Okay, let's go on to four, fourteen point zero, zero two. Approve the dissolution of the select election committee. Doc, Doc, Dr. Mitchell, do you wanna?
Yes, thank you, trust. So, so our board policy requires us to dissolve, uh, a, um. Yeah, committee of the board, and so this particular committee was one to conduct paper screening for. Uh, the appointment of trustee Webster. So, so we have a trust, we have a committee, a sub-board, subcommittee comprised of trustee La French and trustee.
Akis.
Trustee Akis, and so this is just a resolution to dissolve that committee. Thank you.
Okay, can, can I get a motion to approve?
Trustee Turner, a motion that we approve to dissolve the selection committee.
Okay, and a sec, second?
I'm just your seconds.
Okay, and can I get a vote, please?
Trustee Akis? Okay, trustee Akis did tell me she was gonna leave after fourteen oh one, so I'll take note that she left at nine twenty-six PM.
Okay.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee Webster?
Trustee Webster, I.
Trustee Benz?
And Benz, I. The mo- motion pass, passes four, zero, zero. Okay, move, moving on to four, fourteen point zero, zero, three. Uh, business serve, services, adopt sp- special tax ordinance, number twenty-one. Point twenty-two point six sixteen for community facilities. District, number four, authorize rising levy of special taxes. For CFD, number four of the odd, odd law, law, Lonto Elementary School District. Can I get a motion or do we need to speak on that or?
We don't.
Cause we already discussed it, yeah. Okay, so can I get a motion to approve?
Trustee Turner, I'm motion that we approve the CFD number four.
Okay, and can I get a sec, second?
Trustee La French, I second.
Thank you, and we need a vote. Trustee La French?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee Webster?
Trustee Webster, I.
Trustee Benz?
And Benz, I. Mo- motion pass, passes four, zero, zero. Okay, go, going on to four, fourteen point zero, zero, four. Business serve, services approval of res, resolution, twenty-one point twenty-two. Point nine nineteen, create, creation of fund for forty. Wow, I lost my train of thought. Dr. Mitchell, you want to?
Yeah, yeah, so this is a very kind of business activity that just separates our, our. Army funds from our facilities fund so that we're able to better track our facilities projects. And so, um, so when we run reports, we're able to see exactly what we spent on particular building projects. And so this is a, this is a normal, uh, it's more of an accounting system. Most districts have this. This district does, and so we want to create this, but we, we plan on doing several projects over the next few years and we want to make sure that we track it. And not co-mingle it with our other regular files.
Okay. Okay, thank, thank you. I can, can I get a motion to approve?
Go Webster.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
You go.
Okay. Okay, so I will give the mo- motion to Webster and I will give the sec, second to La La French.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, okay, we're open for discuss, discussion? Okay, here, 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 none call for the vote. Let's see, La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Akis, uh, Benz, sorry.
Benz, I. Mo- mo- motion passes for zero, zero. And we, we go on to the superintendence report.
Thank you, trustee Benz. I'll be brief, board, just several announcements I wanna share. And so, um, so formally welcome trustee Webster to, to the team. Um, it just, she's been exciting to work with so far, looking forward to a long work relationship together. She's jumped right in, board. Reading everything and asking questions and really wants to, um, know, know about our district. And so just very excited to have you join the team, trustee Webster. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, what I want to thank you for committing to our joint executive cabinet and board trusting planning meeting upcoming. Uh, we will be away in Pop Springs on from March fourth to March sixth. Uh, so Friday to Sunday, I will come in Thursday night and work all day Friday, all day Saturday. I am working with CSBA to, as well as the board's legal, the board's attorney, Adrian Connor Mac. Co-pitch or co-facilitate some work on governance of the boards. Uh, has requested me to do, and I'm looking forward to some, some deep time together. We plan, we think. We can reflect on, on, on our district and our performance and how we continue to empower and enable our, to do great things. On behalf of the kids and families in our district, so I'm looking very, very, uh, looking forward to that time together. Um, I did give you a, a schedule of, of staff reports and presentations. Uh, you see that we've kinda kicked that off. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to shift gears here. You know, I have to credit Mr. Quintero for reminding me to get me out of this emergency mode. I, I've been in pandemic so long, board, and we've been, all we think about is COVID. And I just had to shake, uh, I needed Steve to shake me out of that emergency mode. And like, get back to the business of the business and talking about student achievement and, and teacher development and principal development and the things. And the core function that is our district, which is to support teaching and learning, which is to support. Um, the growth and development of our children, which is to support, um, the engagement of our families. And we just, this, you know, I think I've reached my limit with, with COVID, so I, I want to create, you know, we, we disagree. Um, uh, on the need to get out of this funk we're in. Um, it's still a very complex matter, and so I'll do my best to keep the, our staff informed. Board informed, our parents informed about the what of our decision, but also the why behind our decisions. I think I could communicate those things better. And you have my commitment to do that and just wrestling with some of these complexities. That is COVID, uh, it's not as simple and if it was, we would be doing. And so, uh, thank you all for your patience, but as you can see, now we're gonna shift to talking about kids. And teachers and principals and the directors and the hardworking classified staff. And everybody that has kept us functioning at a high level. I also wanna think our, 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 our ADTA members, our teachers. Who not only have been, have been teaching regular class, but have been subbing in their peers' class to support so many absences. Thank you for all that you do, and I just wanna give a huge shout out and to our classified staff who have kept us afloat. Uh, to, to Diane's point earlier about just doing multiple jobs and doing, and fitting where you need to fit in and helping me figure this out. And keeping our buses going and our kitchens clean, our kids fed, our school clean. It's just been amazing effort. I also wanna thank the staff has, has jumped in wholeheartedly to support us. Uh, and through the contact tracing, uh, we fixed the gap and boy was I scared with that gap. But man, this staff stepped up and I tell you, we're functioning and people are tired. Uh, people are overworked, uh, and, and, and people are overburdened. But I tell you, uh, it's just been amazing to watch the staff pull together, uh, to create, to create success for our children. And also for each other as staff members, working on this, rowing this ship together. I just envisioned a bunch of oars out of a big ship and everybody's got a different oar and it's in a different place in the boat. Uh, but we're all rowing toward the same places, so I'm rolling right with it. And I, I appreciate all that our staff is doing, so thank you. I also wanna take some time to thank the board as well. Board, um, we've had tough times managing through this pandemic. We've had some tough questions. Uh, we've had some tough decisions and I just wanna thank the board's leadership for your commitment in helping us be successful. And so, um, I say all that to say, uh, we going to get back to the business of the business, which is creating success and smiling children. And, and kids who feel good about themselves. I love the direction that Rich is going with Columbia focused on this mindset. And all, and to it's in, all of our schools are focusing on, uh, Rich more deliberately with his staff around. Uh, just teaching kids to have a growth mindset. Kids out of that funk too, that they have, they are powerful. Uh, and they, and they can enact change in their environment and they, and they can create success for themselves. Where they may not have experienced successes. I'm just super related just to see those, that, that kind of activity. And those kind of conversations going on at our schools, so just wanted to say that, that you'll see. Uh, these are student achievement and presentations on the program that we're trying to push. And, and, and I really, I really want to, to share a core value with you is that. I don't believe in just showing all the good stuff and good news and, and presenting good stuff. Some of this stuff, some of this data, it's not gonna do it. Uh, we've been out of school for a year and a half, uh, with, with distance learning, we know. Uh, we know, the researchers telling us the kids six to nine months behind. In an environment where they're already, where we have some significant underperform, underperformance among our students. And so we got a lot of catch-up to do, we got a lot of innovation to do, and we just gotta just put our heads to the grind. And support one another and wrap arms together to continue to work. And so I'm, I'm just excited about where we're going and what's, what's, what's ahead of us. Um, I wanna share too that I'm happy to support, much more information to come. Happy to, uh, to, to support Dr. Dwyer's on, her staff who are kicking off the, the reading campaign, A C D Reads. Um, so, so we're doing all these things at the schools. You heard Dr. Dwyer's on talk about, most of our schools. Are focused on early literacy and reading, and so those are, those are things that the adults are doing for kids. What the reading campaign is to, is to elicit the support of our broader community. Uh, around reading to, to engage parents in reading, I, you know, to engage our, our community partners in this reading campaign. And so we want to create this environment that's abuzz with, with literacy and we want, we want our local stores involved. We want the koalas and involved, we want all of our partners involved, and we want our kids to be immersed in a citywide effort around reading. That starts first in the classroom, uh, expands out to the home and then it expands out to the community. So that's what we're looking to do. Much more information to come. Uh, we've sent you some kickoff information. Uh, our first, our first big kickoff is on March second with the Read Across America Day, uh, America Day. Staff has asked, uh, parents and teachers and community members to read the kids on March second. Board, if you, if you wanna read a book to a classroom, please, please let Exin you know, it should get you, should get you wired in. I'll be reading, Camden will be reading, and so, uh, it's just gonna be fun to just go into classrooms and read a book to kids. Uh, just to, just to share this love of reading that we all have as adults. Uh, we want that to be, if there's, if there's, if, since we're speaking about infections, let's infect kids with this love of reading. And we've asked that you help us do that and please join us on that day. Looking forward to you being part of that. Board, um, just to give you a heads up, community as well, we're beginning the conversation about late start for next year. We have two of our middle schools, uh, you know, A B three twenty-eight passed in October twenty-two, twenty nineteen. Which was largely based on pediatric and adolescent research around, hey, uh, sometimes I think our schools, they, they, you know, our schools opened too early. And, and so this initiative is to not have middle schools, uh, open, uh, later than, um, or no, earlier, I'm sorry, than eight AM. We have two of our schools that are, that are past AM. We're gonna engage our schools, engage our community and get this, get a change. In the start times as, as early as possible to our staff and to our communities. Um, with that, and we know it also involves transportation, nutrition services, it just involves the whole district. And so Dr. Dwyer's on is leading an inter, um, you know, inter-divisional committee comprised of all three divisions, business services. Um, academic services and human, human resources, as well as getting the voices from our teachers, classified staff. Principals and our community, and we will soon bring a recommendation to the board to change our hours. To come into compliance with A B three twenty-eight, so that's coming and then. Uh, oh, hey, I'm so excited to announce the next supper with the superintendent is on March, excuse me, February fifteenth, six to seven thirty. Um, we'll be, we'll be inviting all of our parents out. We're doing a huge marketing campaign to get as many parents as we can get out. And, uh, we're gonna get some updates and we're gonna talk about, uh, the instructional vision that we have for kids and staff here. But we also have a very special guest that I'm asked to speak, Lieutenant Consuelo Kickbush. I've worked with her in the past. She was a, she's a Latina and she was the highest ranking Latina in the army. She retired from the army and has since, is just this renowned, excellent, passionate, charismatic. Parent trainer, so we want to use the supper with the superintendent as a kickoff to a series of parent workshops. parent trainer. And so we want to use the supper with the superintendent as a kickoff to a series of parent workshops designed to increase resilience and success among children here. So I'm so excited to announce that. And I'm hoping the board can see her because when you see her, you'll 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 see what I'm talking about. She's just one of those special people that is able to make you cry and laugh at the same time. And I and I'm and I'm guilty of that as well with her. She's, I call her a whisperer. She's just able to speak to people's hearts and minds. And I think that she'll be able to provide some inspiration to our parents who need some inspiration. We all do. At this time, we've been getting beat down by this world so bad that we need someone sometimes to pour into us so that we can move forward and put a brighter day and create a growth mindset in us all. So looking forward to that. A lot of information going out about that. Please let Xinyan know if you plan on attending. Of course, when you come into any environment or meeting that I'm having, I always want to introduce you and give you an opportunity to say a couple of words to parents. We think it's gonna be a big deal. Tonight, thank you. Tonight, board, you approved a security assessment company called Knowledge Saves Lives tonight for $20,000. Thank you so much. My, what we want to do is ask this company to come in and and conduct an assess a security assessment of the district office as well as our PDC center of the old George. We have significant staff in the back of the DO in portables. I have deep concerns about their safety. I want to upgrade the safety and security of our staff in the portables in the back as well as our maintenance and operations in bus yard as well as we have significant staff that are beginning to work out of the professional development center. And so we want to ask Knowledge Saves Lives to come in. They'll do an aerial assessment. They'll give us, they'll give us a recommendation of how we can quote unquote harden those sites to to improve security and safety for our staff at those places. So we're looking at cameras, gates, alarms, step back peep holes, camera systems and all things that that we need to do to secure the safety of our schools and staff. As you know, we we put buzzers at all the front doors of our our schools and we're continuing to assess all of our campuses for safety. And so now we're putting our attention on the district office as well as the PDC center. So so thank you for that, for approving that tonight. And let me see. Those are my announcement. Those are my comments. Thank you, board.
All right. Thank, thank you, Doc, Dr. Mitchell. Okay, why don't we go ahead and go to 16.01 adjournment? Can can I get get a motion to approve?
A motion to approve La French?
Okay, can I get a sec second?
Webster, seconds.
Okay, and can we call for vote, vote, please?
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Turner? Trustee Turner? You think you're muted?
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee Webster?
Trustee Webster, I.
And trustee Benz?
And trustee Benz, I. Mo- motion passes 400. Zero, the time is now 9:45. Please, everyone, have a good night.
Okay, good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.